Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening and welcome to the October 27th, 2025 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. As the hour is 6:30, I will call the meeting to order. For the first half hour, the board is hopefully going to go into non-public for approximately 10 minutes, at which point we will come out of non-public and remain downstairs in the Wheelwright Room where we will conduct two board interviews. And then we'll be back up in the Novak Room promptly at 7 o'clock to commence our regular business meeting. So with that, I would entertain a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A 32A.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please.
Clerkman Chartrand?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. The motion passes 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, welcome back to the October 27, 2025 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. As the hour is 7 o'clock, we will start our regular business meeting. The board came to order at 6:30. We went into non-public briefly, and we had two board interviews. So I'd like to start by saying good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, those of you in attendance, and certainly those watching at home. I'll start by introducing the board. We only have three of us tonight. We do have a quorum. Selectwoman Gilman and Selectwoman Cowan respectively had unavoidable conflicts, but we will carry on with the three of us. To my right, Selectman Dan Chartran, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
To my left, our clerk, Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening.
And sitting in for our interim town manager, who is at a conference, we have our Finance Director Cory Stephens, good evening.
Evening, everyone.
Our Recording Secretary Joanna Bartel, good evening. My name is Nico Papakostidis, and again, welcome. I would ask that if I fell out of my chair or was abducted, that you'd take over his chair, but if that happens, there's only two of you, so you'd have to adjourn.
Don't even doubt.
Fall out of quorum.
At any rate, first on our agenda this evening is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come up and make comment to the board. If your comments are relative to anything on the agenda, we ask for you to wait till that item comes up, so I'll pause for a moment. And if you just state your name and address for the record, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sean Ricard. I live at Phillips Exeter, where I also go to school. I am in 10th grade, and I run on the cross-country team. I have four fellow members of my team with me here tonight. We are here to express our concerns with the spring on Oak Street being inactive. The team often does runs through the Henderson-Swayze Fort Rock Trails, and on our way out, we often stop on the spring on Oak Street to take a sip of water after a long workout in the woods. Unfortunately, for the last few weeks, the spring is no longer flowing. It appears a PVC pipe has been inserted. The structure behind it is kind of off-kilter. We're very saddened to notice this a few weeks ago, and because it's certainly added to the charm and the enjoyment of the area where we run. It's my understanding that the piece of land that the spring is on now belongs to the Exeter Rose Farm LLC. This was bought in the past few years or so, and there's been construction going on. Since the land is controlled by this development, we can only assume that they either turned it off or there was some issue with the spring. I believe it would be the best interest of the town to preserve access to the water, because not only do we cherish it, we oftentimes see many different members of the town community rolling down the hill and filling up jugs and jugs of this water into their trucks of their cars. Given its clear importance to us and many others, I would propose that the town rebuy or reclaim to this ownership of the Jailhouse Spring in order to protect it from the construction. It would be minimal consequence to the developers. It really only takes up a little bit of space, and I think it would definitely be beneficial.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. I did get your email this weekend.
Yep.
And I'll be responding to that. Obviously, there's, excuse me, there's a lot more here.
Right, I'm sure.
But I appreciate you coming this evening. Thank you for bringing members of your team, and I'll get back to you this week.
Thank you so much.
Great, thanks. Any other public comment? Okay, there's nobody online, so we'll move forward to approval of minutes. The first matter would be approving the minutes of our regular meeting of October 14, 2025. First, ask if there are any amendments or revisions.
I did find one.
Okay.
I suspect. In line 250, page 6, Ms. Belanger asked why we can't do both, and I believe it should be Ms. Roy said, "We're not asking for both days," if I'm remembering correctly.
You are remembering correctly.
So I would amend the second, Belanger to Roy.
Get that, Joanna?
That's it.
Any other revisions? Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of October 14, 2025, as amended.
So moved.
And I'll second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 3-0. The second thing we need to do with minutes this evening, going back to August 18, there's a contract that the interim town manager needs to sign, and with that need to be the minutes from our meeting where we named her the interim town manager. And unfortunately, in the minutes, it says Acting Town Manager.
Oh.
So we need to...
So we need to do, we need to do two motions. The first would be to rescind the approval of the minutes of the August 18, 2025 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
And I'll second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
So that was the rescind?
That's the rescind. The second is we need to amend the August 18, 2025 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting Minutes to reflect that we named Melissa Roy the interim town manager, not Acting Town Manager.
So moved.
And I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the revised August 18, 2025 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting Minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. Next, we have several appointments to take up this evening. The first is a request from the Sustainability Advisory Committee to appoint Julie Grant from an alternate to a voting member.
I would make a motion to move Julie Gaunt from alternate to voting. She's been doing excellent work on the committee.
And do you know if there's a term on that?
I don't.
Uh, August 30, 2028, okay. And I would entertain a motion to appoint Julie Gaunt as a regular voting member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee, with a term expiring April 30, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 3-0. We have two resignations to take up this evening. The first is from Verity Boyer from the Historic District Commission. Would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Verity Boyer from the Historic District Commission.
So moved.
And I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 3-0, and we thank Verity for her work on the...
Yes.
HDC. The second is resignation from Renee O'Barton from the Exeter Housing Authority. I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation from Renee O'Barton from the Exeter Housing Authority.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 3-0, and we thank Renee for her work. We have two appointments this evening for the Train Committee. These are the individuals we interviewed earlier this evening. The first is to appoint, entertain a motion to appoint Kenneth Berry to the Train Committee for a term to expire April 2027.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 3-0. And the second is, is it resident, what we're calling it?
Resident, regional resident.
Regional resident.
Regional resident.
Cory's got it.
I would entertain a motion to appoint Robert Hall to the Train Committee as a regional resident, non-voting member with no term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 3-0. And lastly, we'd need a select board representative to the Train Committee.
And I nominate Selectman Chartran to be in that position.
I have been attending those meetings. I'd be happy to accept that position, if it works for the two of you.
Absolutely.
If it works for us, and I'm sure Selectwoman Gilman and Cowan respectively would go along with that, so congratulations, you are now the select board rep, the official train.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you all for your patience. I'd like to go a little out of order on the discussion items. Mr. Cronin, you've got two quick things. And the reason that I'm asking this is because this gentleman needed a quick approval at the planning board and sat through a three-hour planning board for his five minutes, so...
Yeah, yeah, he does.
I'm asking for your indulgence.
Thank you, guys, that was great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, much appreciated.
Which one are you doing first?
The Drinkwater Road...
Groundwater.
Groundwater.
Okay, before you do that, I need to open the public hearing. So I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing under RSA 41:14A, groundwater easement, first public hearing.
So moved.
And I'll second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 3-0, public hearing is open. Mr. Cronin.
All right, if I may, for those attending tonight and watching online, I'd like to just give a brief overview of this project.
Please.
I know the board's well aware of this, but since 2020, the town has been actively working to develop a new groundwater source in an effort to diversify its water supplies, expand capacity, and provide for operational redundancy. From 2020 to 2022, the Public Works Department conducted a groundwater exploration program to identify potential groundwater development zones. A total of 22 boreings were drilled across three target zones. The most promising site was located on Phillips Exeter Academy property off Drinkwater Road. In 2022, a test wall was installed at the site, which yielded positive test results. And following that, the town submitted a preliminary well-sighting application to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. In 2023, the town received preliminary approval for the new source, provided that it secured an easement for the new well and all the associated infrastructure. So in August of '24, the town finalized an option agreement with PEA to negotiate the purchase of the easement contingent upon the town obtaining all the necessary approvals for the new source. Later that fall, a 12-inch production well was installed, and we completed a seven-day pumping test as part of the final application process. In May of '25, the town submitted the final well-sighting application and report to New Hampshire DES, which requested a production volume of 400 gallons a minute. DES recently completed their review of that report and is prepared to issue the final large groundwater withdrawal permit, once the town provides documentation demonstrating that it secured the necessary easements and has full legal control over the sanitary protection area for the new well. Under RSA 4114A, the board has the authority to accept, or to acquire easements after it meets all the statutory requirements, including referring the easement to the Conservation Commission, Planning Board, and any other relevant boards for consideration and a recommendation. With that, this went, as you said, before the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and the Heritage Commission as well. All of them voted in favor of recommending the easement. So at this point, we are asking you to conduct the public hearing and acquire the easement.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cronin?
Just two, I just want to reiterate what the Conservation Commission asked for language in the deed to be looked at, and then the Heritage Commission also had...
Yes. So Conservation Commission, one of the members that actually works for DES, and there was an instance of another well that was permitted in another town, where the deed didn't explicitly call out the right to withdraw water from the property. So they recommended some language to us, which we have run by council, so they're going to be making a small modification to the draft language for the deed, which we will then bring back to PEA for approval. So that was one. And the other, the Heritage Commission just wanted to make sure that we did everything within our power to make sure we protect Jude's Pond during construction and after construction, which there are provisions within the bid documents to make sure that that happens.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
That was it for me.
Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 3-0. The second public hearing will be on November 10, at which time the board will take a vote. Thank you, Mr. Cronin. And now you've got one more for us?
Yes.
Okay.
The second item tonight is a request to perform winter work, winter construction work for the West Side Drive project. Again, a project I know that you're all familiar with. There's a long history here. This project has had a number of delays due to permitting, redesign, easement acquisitions, and other factors, but we opened bids back on June... But we opened bids back on June 16th, went through a review process. The bids then went to DES, and they, because of the long delay in the project and turnover in personnel, both with us and with DES, it took quite a while for them to review that and issue an authorization to award, which they did on October 6th. Typically, we do not allow for winter construction. But in this case, we're okay with making an exception because we're going to be fully reconstructing the road all the way down to full depth, essentially. So all the utilities, 24 inches of base, all-new road surface. So usually, we don't allow it because you're cutting into an existing road. There's the potential for settlement, decrease in longevity of the road. But in this case, we're going to be doing a full reclaim next spring. We talked to the contractor about their construction methods, their sequencing. They provided us a number of references for winter work that they've done recently. So we checked all of those references. Our consultant has also allowed for winter construction recently and has, it feels comfortable recommending that we authorize them to do so. Because our road opening permit specifies that we don't allow road construction after November 15th, we felt that it was necessary to bring it to the board to get that authorization and to issue a notice to proceed to the contractor.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have none.
Any questions from the public?
Hello, everybody. Nicholas Metz, One Tilted Avenue, residing within the West Side. I'm just here to speak for, you know, Mr. Cronin has done an amazing job navigating this since I've involved myself with it. And so we haven't seen the entire plan in its entirety, but we'll see that Thursday. But just from what I've dug and speaking to the other residences, we think that this is prudent. Given the delays and what we've seen, we're prepared to deal with whatever winter throws our way. So I'm for it.
Great, thank you very much. And I second, you have done an amazing job putting this together.
As Mr. Metz mentioned, Thursday night at Exeter Public Library, 6 o'clock, we will be holding a neighborhood information meeting. We did send out notices to all the residents in West Side as well as updated our project page and there's a message board out there. So we've done our best to reach everyone. We will be recording that meeting so that we can pass that information along. But, you know, happy to answer any of the questions that the residents have that night.
Terrific, perfect. Anybody else from the public? Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to authorize Engrines and Sons Inc. to perform winter construction for the West Side Drive Drainage, Water, and Roadway Improvement Project and to further authorize the interim town manager or their designated to sign and issue the notice to proceed.
So moved.
I'll second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries three zero. Thank you, Mr. Cronin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your patience in letting Mr. Cronin go quickly.
That was awesome, by the way. I like the speed.
So earlier this year, the board implemented a tax exemption and credit advisory committee. And these folks have been working very, very hard on the mission that we gave them. And this evening, we have most of the members of the committee here. Everyone's here, except for our select board rep, Wright. So I'd like to invite the chair, Christine Suter, to come forward. There's been a memo in our packet, but Christine's going to speak to that. I do want to say that Selectwoman Cowan and Selectwoman Gilman are not here. Selectwoman Gilman will not be here on November 10th. So the board, we're going to listen this evening, but we're not going to deliberate until November 24th, when we have a full board. So. The floor is yours. Either the podium or the table, whichever you're most comfortable.
Well, sitting's more comfortable, but standing makes you go faster, so. Because we're, I think, a number of us are going to come up and speak, so we'll stand. But now, we, first of all, I want to thank our committee for all their in-depth work. We've been, they've put a lot, a lot of time and effort into doing research before coming to the table. On the committee, we have Jeannie Wright, we have Mark Furlong, Jerry Hamel, Julie Gilman, and me, Chris Suter. So we've been meeting for almost a year now and going over a variety of tax exemptions and credits available to residents of the Town of Exeter. We decided to focus on what we'd like to see possibly presented on the 2026 ballot for any sorts of changes and then continuing to go forth with any, with more research and review for next year. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to give just a brief overview of the first part, what we're talking about, and then let any members from my committee come up and speak and let you guys ask any questions, if you have any. So, yeah. And the other thing, I just want to make sure that we didn't always have the same reasoning when we came to the table for why we wanted something or didn't want something. But we did all, at the end of the day, come to the same conclusions. So I am definitely speaking for myself, and I'm sure others will be speaking for themselves as well. But we did all, at the end of the day, come to the same conclusion, which is really important. So first of all, as I said, there's been a variety, there's a variety of tax credits and exemptions available to residents of Exeter. It has been, I don't remember the year, and we're going to have time to look for it. But it's been quite a number of years since any changes have been made. And so that's one of the reasons why we were brought together, to take a look at some of these, or all of these, actually. We started, I think, December 2024, meeting on a monthly basis. And we are, we have some recommendations that we've provided for you guys. So starting with the elderly exemptions, we're recommending some changes for the elderly exemptions, as you can see. As far as the recommendations for the valuations on the homes, all of them, we recommended an increase. And for the income limits, also an increase, a small one, but an increase as well for the elderly income limits. And no changing for the assets. Because we felt that as looking, and we did look at other communities. Now, I want to say definitely, and I said this, most of our meetings, Exeter is very unique. So you can't just say, well, Stratum does this, or Newmarket does that, and Hampton does this. We still did look at all those communities all the time and other communities throughout the entire state of New Hampshire. But always reminding ourselves that Exeter is a unique community. And so, but we did, we did do that. And so we came up with these changes. And as you see, for the rationale, I think, you know, this is my theory, but I have a feeling it's pretty accurate. When we had the reevaluation done, everybody saw, obviously, the increase in their home value. And that, of course, you know, with that become, you know, a decrease in the tax rate to hopefully balance it out somewhat so that it's not a ridiculous, you know, gigantic increase in your taxes. However, what we saw was a disproportionately higher amount for many of the homes that are valued at some of the lowest amounts in Exeter. These sharp increases resulted in tax bills that were also disproportionately higher for many of our elderly residents. And it is for this reason we recommend a modest, roughly 30% adjustment to the property value reduction levels. And we did look at what also, as well as what does that come out to? Is that, and we, because we weren't looking, we weren't looking to zero everything out. We just want to make sure that it was a level playing field, if you will. And then as far as the current recipients of the exemption remain within the existing income limits. However, the average New Hampshire social security benefit at about $1976 per month, which is $23,712 annually. A married couple typically receives about $47,424 annually. Due to the rising cost of living, as we all can understand and appreciate, modest adjustments to the income thresholds are recommended. So we felt that it was really important to get this on the 2026 ballot to help those that are affected by this the most with the, again, with the reevaluation. So I'm going to pause there to see if anybody for questions. And if you have questions, I think we have folks on the committee that did some good research, so.
Any questions for the chair?
Not this time.
No, not right now?
See, it pays a stand. So do we have anyone from our committees that would like to add to this?
Jerry Hamel. I think the biggest thing when we're looking at the elderly is evaluation. When the price went up, that's where really a lot of them got hurt. We had a gap in evaluations. So if someone, for example, in a manufactured home had an $80,000 home, they had like an 80-year-old person, they had a threshold of going up to 239, I think it's like 239,000 the values could rise to. It was 236, 250. So there was a big gap there that, you know, even with a large increase, and there was a large increase on the manufactured, a lot of that gap absorbed the valuation for the mobile home. So they didn't get hurt as much. Stick-built homes were just the opposite because there really weren't many homes that were worth under that $236,000. So the people that actually ended up having a stick-built home, their valuation, they really felt it quite a bit. And I think, to me, that was one of my criteria that I wanted to really focus on is, you know, the valuation, we would have to go up about 50% to equal what we had before. And what we actually suggested was a 30%, roughly 30%. So we felt that was being fair. You know, it's kind of hard because when you look at some of the houses that are now worth $450,000, $500,000, and you could have assets up to $190,000, you start looking at that as well. You know, can someone actually tap at the resources to help them out? But you don't want to have them tap everything. So I think with the valuation increase, that's going to really help that out. And the other thing was the MS-1 in Corey, thank God, we've got the guru here of the Treasury, so he can check my figures on that. And the 2000, when you're looking at the 2004 valuation, the actual money, amount of money that we, we lost in value went up by about $7 million. But because of the interest rate was cut down by about a third, the actual money, if you're actually looking at what we're paying now for the rate, actually went down about $50,000. And a lot of that increase is due to the gap in the homes for the manufactured housing. Because they, as they went up, they increased that valuation. So it's kind of one of those type of things, you know, is it real money or is it artificial money? Because it's money that we would never see because we gave them a gap to go into. So it's really, is it costing us more money? I mean, I've had that conversation with Corey before. It's, I really don't know what the answer to that is. So I think with that, with that said, you know, those are the, I think the major increases on the elderly are going to be warranted. And, you know, it should be definitely taken into consideration for this year's election.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Hamel.
All right, thank you. Like I said, they put a lot of time and effort into it. As you could tell, people really did their work. And I don't want to forget to say that as, you know, we're talking about making increases, you know, for folks here. And remind, you guys all know, but a lot of people don't know, I'm also on the Budget Committee. And this is going to be an excruciatingly difficult year for us. So I'm always wearing that hat of, you know, let's be careful, let's be careful, let's be careful. Is this really, really necessary? Because, you know, this is going to be a really tough year for the town. So wearing that hat, I fully supported this as well, so. And then a quick one would be the blind exemption going from 15,000 to 25,000. And it's, it was, we were on the very low end in getting in line with the other communities. I don't feel it has a big impact on the town. So I don't know if there's any questions with that one.
So you're giving them a credit of 25,000 on the value of their home, is that?
Yes.
Got it.
Right?
You're getting an exemption.
Exemption, yeah, because the tax credit's applicable.
So that's a dollar amount or the value?
It's a reduction of the value.
Yeah, deduction off the value of the home. From 15,000 off the value of the home to 25,000 off the value of the home. That's an exemption.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I knew what you were talking about.
I know, and trust me, we'd go round and round and then we'd forget where we started and then forget what that meant. So we'd have to wait a minute.
All these numbers are reductions of the value.
Everything we've talked about is an exemption so far.
Got it.
So. Anyone from the committee? All right. So the next one that we moved on to was about the veterans' tax credits.
No, these are straight credits, not reduction in valuation.
These are all credits.
So it shifts, okay.
Yes, and I'm running credits. So this is, wouldn't seem complicated, but it is maybe to me, just to me, or maybe to our entire committee and to Julie. But it got very complicated because of changes in laws. And if you get, and this is going to increase, and if that increases and with this new law, then you can't apply for this one. And so there's a lot of rounding and rounds that we did. And there's a lot of different available tax credits out there, too. So we started with the disabled veterans' tax credit, where we, it's at $2,000 right now. And we recommended that it move up to 2,500. Trying to think what the max is there. I think that's the highest, isn't it? Right, right, but yeah, so that, and that'll get interesting. So we, I'll start with, we recommended that it be moved up to 2,500.
And that's annually?
Yes.
So that's the one that's not, I'm sorry.
No.
It's not specifically a change.
The mic.
Could you just come?
Yeah, go ahead. This is where things get really.
No, that's okay.
I had to literally make myself a cheat sheet.
Yep, which I had in front of me and it's still.
Jeanne Wright, hello. So this is the one where there was a legislative bill that passed mid-year that said that if they qualified for the service disconnected disability credit, they could not also get the optional tax credit that we offer for combat-related vets. So all along, if anyone qualifies in town for this credit, they've been able to get both and now they can't. So we're recommending that we increase it to 2,500 so they don't take a loss for the following years. So it's really not going to be any, it's not going to be any different than it is now. It's just going to combine the two into one.
Okay.
So, yeah, this took us a little bit to wrap our heads around.
Yeah. And every time we, like, again, this is the one where we walk away for five minutes, you go, wait a minute, what was that? And a lot of similar names and everything. But yeah, basically, what it said, the reason why we recommend it going up is because if we didn't, then the disabled veterans would take a loss, actually, from where they were to where they are now because of the new law. Now, there's no, you can't have both. Just, and I want to make sure that's clear as well, so.
And again, that's the annual amount. So on each tax bill, they would get a reduction on their tax bill of 1,250 if the voters approve it.
2,500 versus 2,000.
Per tax bill or over the course of the year?
Over the course of the year.
For the full assessment for the.
1,250 per tax bill.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
All right. So then the all-veterans' tax credit. Let me make sure I get this, again, speak correctly. Glad you guys are staying close by because this morning gets really challenging. So we discussed the current optional tax credit for certain qualified veterans compared to the all-veterans' tax credit for consideration. We just talked about that. We are only, one, in Rockingham County, Exodus is only one of three municipalities that do not offer the all-veterans' tax credit. A resident and a veteran who I think is going to be here to speak this evening also spoke to the Select Board and our committee asking for support of the all-veterans' tax credit. Now, we propose that the all-veterans' tax credit be placed on the warrant to be considered, to be adopted for, I believe the level would be 500. Not because all of us agreed that it should be adopted, but because we've agreed that it should go to the voters to decide. Again, myself trying to be fiscally conservative, knowing that we already do offer some tax credits for veterans, and there's also other programs out there, that to just keep, to not put it on this year might be the best idea for the town because of our financial situation and with our taxes and our budget. So, but again, we all agreed. And again, we all had different viewpoints on it. And I know Mark's got some research because we were talking about impact and things like that. And that was basically impossible to figure out. What, if we adopted this for all veterans, anyone serving over 90 days, how would that impact us? And there really is no way to know the exact number. Is it a lot? Is it nothing? Is it negligible? Mark can speak to that. But at the end of the day, and in simplest terms, it was, we weren't able to, you know, you can't, you can't know. However, again, I just want to make sure it's very clear that we all have different opinions. We all really respect and honor our veterans. But as far as adding this to the, to be adopted, we didn't all have the same, come to the same conclusion personally. But we all agreed together that it should go to the voters to decide. So with that being said.
Mark, do you want to share your?
Mark did a lot of research, so I'd really love to give him a couple of minutes to speak to that.
Good evening, Mark. We have available to us from Department of Revenue Administration a lot of data. They publish data every year from the entire state, for every community, for all the credits and exemptions that we've been studying for the last year. So when we started digging into the details for the all-veterans' credit, I analyzed that data both for the whole state as well as for Rockingham County, what Christine just referred to, is there are 37 communities in Rockingham County and 34 have adopted the all-veterans' credit. The other, and the average credit adopted is 675 by those communities. And if we were to adopt the all-veterans' credit, it has to match the optional credit, the amount. The other thing that's been a question, and I think it was brought up by Mr. Dean at our very first meeting, is there's been discussion about the all-veterans' credit in the past, but no one had an idea of what the impact might be. And that was one of the things that I focused on, on the data, was looking at both statewide as well as in Rockingham County, how many credits were actually granted? And when you compared them to the number of optional, standard and optional credits that were granted, it was 13% all-veterans' credits granted statewide and 12% in Rockingham County. So from that, I was able to project that, you know, with the, where was the number? Exodus currently grants 465 optional veterans' credits. So at 12, 13%, there'd probably be 56 to 60 veterans that would qualify for that credit if we were to adopt it. And that would be in the dollar range of $28,000 to $30,000. So it's not a big impact. I know that's been a question, you know, would that number be greater than the optional? But at least it looks statewide, does not appear to be the case. I also looked at the data for communities that are similar in size. Just that I looked at that band, there was about a half a dozen of them. And that it's held true for those as well. So I think we won't know until we adopt it. But I think it gives us something to, you know, wrap our heads around a little bit. It's good work, thank you.
Yeah, Mark did an exceptional amount of research. And as you can see at the end, and that's when, of course, when I talked about how, I would say Exodus is unique, Exodus is unique. We talked about, well, this community, that community, and all the communities, if you, you know, add them up and divide and those numbers come out to this, we may be right in line with them, we may not. Because I know Exodus is a very, very unique community as far as our makeup. So, but Mark did great work. And if those numbers pan out, it's not a big impact fiscally to the town of Exodus, which would be, which would be great if it were adopted. It's just the unknown part kind of freaks me out when I'm on the Budget Committee.
Mr. Stevens, did you have a question?
Just a quick one. So the 465 that you cited, is that the current number of disabled veteran credits we have?
No, optional.
Optional.
Yeah. So the terminology gets very confusing. There's the standard veterans' credit, which is $50. If we do nothing, that's what applies by statute. Then there's the optional, which is when the town increases that amount, which we've increased it to $500. But that applies to combat-related veterans. The all-veterans' credit would apply to any veteran who served 90 days or more.
And sorry if you already said this, Christine. Would, could someone get both the optional plus the all-veterans?
No, one or the other.
So you can't get 3,000, you can only get 25 or 500?
Well, that was the change that was made for the disabled.
Yeah, that's another. No, I understand, but.
There's a lot of moving parts with all veterans.
Right, but the all-veteran, weren't you recommending 500?
So if adopted, yeah.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. You couldn't get the 2,500 for the.
In the past, they were able to, the disabled veterans.
Right, right.
They were able to, if they were combat, you know, if they served in a named conflict, they were able to get the optional veterans' credit and the disabled. The legislature changed that so they no longer qualified for the optional. So that was why our recommendation to change that to 2,500.
Clarify my question. So could one get the $2,500 plus the 500 being considered under the all-veterans?
No.
Okay, thanks.
And I think it's not part of the reason why we bumped up to 2,500.
Right.
Because if they, yeah.
Understood, thanks.
There's no double-dipping, basically.
And I think there's very few that qualify for the disabled. I don't remember the number, but it isn't a huge amount in town anyhow. But it would impact them. Yeah, so currently it's $500. We're not recommending it increase at all. We're keeping it the same and recommending that we ask voters about adding the all-veterans.
So if it were, that's the thing, is if it were adopted, then, you know, making the assumption that, again, we round and round and round. We had a lot of meetings and really did dive in. So if it were adopted by the town of Exodus, then we didn't want to see that negative impact happening to the disabled veterans if it were adopted. If it's not adopted, you know, again, round and round. So it's, hopefully, we were able to explain that in a way that makes sense without. Again, if you go too far in the weeds, it just.
Could I just ask you to repeat something that you said on your numbers? I just want to make sure I'm understanding them right. So on the all-veterans' credit, you were talking about a bottom-line number that you estimated. Right, so was that at a $500 level?
Yes.
Amount, thank you.
Yes. The statute requires that if we are to adopt the all-veterans' credit, it has to be the same amount that the town has adopted for the optional.
So the other towns that you looked at averaged 675, not 500, is that correct?
Yes, that was, that was for Rockingham County.
So if we wanted to consider increasing our 500 to 675, that would have to be part of a warrant article?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for asking that question.
Isn't the max 750?
The max is 750.
So, yeah, right, so you would have like, sometimes doing a lot of 500s, some doing 750s. So that's where the average, I believe, that Mark came up with was a 675.
Yeah, and we'd been looking at this a few years ago to increase it, so.
Well, this is the one that hasn't been adopted yet.
Yes, yes. I'm talking about the one we already have. But yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not right this time, no, thanks.
I think Jerry wanted to speak.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
The veterans' credit, as you received letters on, it was a, it was a kind of a big topic that we talked about. I was one of the people that did not want the credit. And I just want to explain the reasons behind it. I am very, very pro-military, especially the people who are the boots on the ground that really fight for this country. Now, everybody that's a veteran has gone in with the chance of having to do that. But the stats actually show, out of everyone that goes in, 40% never get deployed. Out of the 60% that are deployed, there's up to 20% that actually see combat. So when they look at the actual status, they're saying anywhere from less than 10% to less than 15% actually see combat. And I think those people are very dear to me. I mean, those people, they're special. And this was something that basically the $500 were, could, it goes to anyone that basically was in a conflict. And I like it that way. I thought it gave them something to show exactly what they gave for this country. Not that everyone else didn't. And I've been talking to a lot of vets lately, a lot of older vets, asking them the question, what do you feel about, should everyone deserve this? And they, I haven't had anyone yet that said yes. So we talked about this whole thing, and I think that's why the town hasn't really voted on this. This is nothing that a board of selectmen or our board can really come up with. This is something that the town's going to have to figure out. And it's going to be one of those type of things that you just have to be cognizant that, yes, there's going to be some people for it, some people against it. And it's, if you're against it, it does not mean that you're anti-veterans. It means that you're holding certain veterans at a higher standard. So I just want to explain that. Thank you.
Anybody else before we open to the public? Please.
I just want to add that we were very divided on the recommendation. We came to consensus on bringing it forward to recommend it be on the ballot so that the voters could decide.
On that, I can agree. And you're entitled to your opinion. And I vigorously disagree, but I guess we'll cancel each other out. Any members of the public wish to speak?
Josh draws over there. Who goes first? Hi, Fred.
Hi, Fred Byrd, 84 Kingston Road. Do I have to direct this to you or can I direct it to Jerry?
You can speak to the board, please.
Okay, so I'll speak to the board. So 100% of us serve. Those 20% that are combat vets, the other 80% make sure that they get their equipment, they get their airplanes, and their transport, and their food, and their bedding. We're all involved. My son joined in 1999. He was a volunteer. Guess what? It blew towers up in 2001. Guess when my son went, in 2002. Afghanistan, Uzbekistan, Jazikistan, Pakistan, Kuwait. So it's a luck of the draw. And he was in combat. So he gets some kind of medical. His dad got no medical. I was a support troop in peacetime in the Cold War. And he used his medical, what he got. I get ziplo. I get a grave, I get a plot, which I'm turning down because I already have a grave and a plot. I'm going to be married with my wife for 46 years so far. Hold it 50, 55, 60 years. Second question I have is, the chair said that veterans get other benefits out there. I wonder if she could clarify what those other benefits are? Thank you.
Thank you. Give you the opportunity if you want to answer the question.
Not particularly.
Okay. Anybody else in the public?
I'm Keith Whitehouse, I'm on 61 West Side Drive. If this is about the money, I've talked to other people that served during the Cold War that are not really seeking the money. Talked to two people specifically, myself would be three, that would not take the credit. We just don't want to be denied the credit. Now, that doesn't mean if I somehow, by some miracle, make it to 99 and I'm eating Meow Mix for dinner, that I wouldn't take it. But as it stands, that's not what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I personally said I'd like to, again, and this is why I said earlier, we came to the same conclusions, but we came with different rationale sometimes. My rationale was 100% fiscal. And it was, can we put it off for one year? Just to get through this budget cycle? And that's it. And as far as, you know, do I, can I list all the benefits there are to veterans? No, but there are benefits, you know, just, you know, whether it's a discount here or for certain veterans, not all veterans, whether it's, you know, some medical, whether it's good, whether it's bad, I don't know. I'm just saying there are some. Just like, my husband's now 65 and he gets some minor benefits when we go out places. It's, again, again, I'm not knocking anybody. And my, and all I want to say is that, my point was, and if I wasn't very eloquent about it, was simply to say that the town, and I say this with a lot of things when we talk about budget, is that when people say, well, this is really an important issue, that's an important issue, this is an important concern, and Exodus needs to step up, Exodus needs to do more. And my point is, Exodus does do for, whether it's some of the veterans, some of the nonprofit organizations in the community, is that we do do something for a lot of people and a lot of organizations. But it's not the town's job. Again, I'm not saying this towards veterans. It's not the town's job to do everything for everyone because we just can't. We just can't. And the more that we keep saying yes to really good stuff and really good organizations and really worthy causes, if we say yes to everything, we're going to be, dig ourselves in such a financial hole, we're not going to be able to get out. And we're not going to be a desirable community, excuse me, because we're going to just be an elitist community. And I just didn't want, I don't want us to get there. And again, I support this going on the ballot. But my personal opinion is just put it off, if we weren't going to support it going on the ballot, we were to support, my opinion, putting off one year for fiscal considerations because of our budget. And that's all.
Thank you, I appreciate that explanation. Yes, Mr. Byrd?
Well, I agree. Government shouldn't be helping everybody and everything. I totally agree with that. And I made it clear, if you watch the video, I wasn't looking for a rebate. But there's some guys out there who could use it. And how much was the total, 20 grand?
What's the estimate?
20 grand in the town of Exodus. Fire department costs $18 million. I don't know how much 20 program costs, or other parks, or it's $20,000. That's like a teardrop.
Just to correct, when you said the fire department, you were referring to the public safety complex?
Yes, $18 million.
The fire department does not have a budget of $18 million.
Thank you for clearing.
We want to be clear about that. But that is the, roughly, that is roughly the cost of the public safety complex.
Please.
We all agreed to vote for it.
Yeah, I just want to add one thing. First of all, I just want to thank the Select Board for appointing me to this committee. I've never had an opportunity to serve in Exodus. It was a great experience, so I appreciate that. I just want to say, I don't want to lose focus of the scope that you gave us to work on was to review these exemptions and credits and make recommendations. And that is hard because you can hear in the room, there's a lot of different opinions and thoughts. But I want to say the good news is, we're all homeowners, we're all taxpayers, and we're all impacted by that, so that can get emotional. But we're all voters. So anybody who's watching tonight, just, that, to me, was why I was grateful that we brought the decision back around to bring it out to voters because essentially that's what we should be doing. We should be deciding in this town. And we can all vote differently, but that's the right that we have to be part of this town. So, again, just thank you. It was a really interesting and cool experience.
Well, our thanks goes to you and to the others that served on the committee. And I know you put a lot of work into this, and it was important work. Before I say, any other comments or questions from the public or anybody else in the committee? Sloughman Belanger?
I'm fine for now, thanks.
Given that we are going to discuss this with a full board hopefully later in November, I think I'll hold my comments. I definitely do have some thoughts, but I'll hold up.
I just want to say, I applaud the fiscal responsibility that you all took. And I also applaud the fact that you came to a consensus from several different ways. That happens oftentimes here. You know, a lot of times, you know, you can look on your warrant and it says Select Board recommends 5-0, but it doesn't mean that we got there the same way. So we appreciate that, and that is called consensus. And that is working together, working through your differences of opinion. I applaud that you're recommending that this go to the voters. Because I think when you have issues like this, it should be up to the voters. It's their money, it's taxpayer money.
And they are the highest power.
They are the, exactly. Exactly.
As it should be.
But I think we need to keep sight of what we're asking the voters to vote on is what they feel should be allocated as a credit, not defining what makes a veteran. And that's all I'm going to say.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
No, but that was well said. And thank you, Jeanne.
Thank you all for coming this evening and tentatively scheduled for November 24th. If that changes, we'll let you know. That'll be the earliest that the board will deliberate on this.
That 5-0 for the Select Board, because people have been asking about that lately. And from my perspective, I think something's been vetted enough, and it's ready for the voters to decide, right? So thank you for bringing that up. Well done on your meeting minutes, by the way. I do watch your meeting.
God bless her.
Thank you.
You don't have to leave. We have other things, we had some fun things to go over tonight.
We're going to lay down now.
I'm going to watch it on TV.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next discussion item this evening is a request from the E-911 Committee. I'm the Select Board Rep to the E-911 Committee. And that committee is made up all of staff, and they're making the recommendation that the board consider adding the town GIS coordinator, which I think makes perfect sense.
To me, too. Yes.
And so unless there are any questions or comments, I'd like to entertain a motion, please, to add the town of Exeter GIS coordinator or their designee to the E-911 Committee as a voting member.
So moved.
I'll second.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. And now I'll hand it over to our Finance Director, Mr. Stevens.
Okay, thank you. I'm disappointed I couldn't draw any kind of crowd here, but sometimes that's easier, so. So we are on the eve of setting our tax rate with DRA. Interim Town Manager Roy and I met with DRA last week to do some preliminary work. We've now received all the data subsequent to that that we need to build the tax rate. And after we discuss fund balance tonight, or the use of fund balance, we can go back and lock that down for the December tax files. So in front of you tonight is the worksheet that I use, and you've seen in the past, that takes us through how to evaluate, how we evaluate using fund balance to smooth or set the tax rate, the local tax rate, the town tax rate. So in front of you is the document, Use of Fund Balance and Tax Rate Setting. And in explaining this, I don't want to dive too deep in the weeds, but I do want to, you know, go through it for voters and for you all, just to explain it a little bit. So the top section of the worksheet kind of lays out the metrics and the things we need to consider when deciding how much fund balance we're going to use. It sort of says, you know, if you've got a budget, if you've got appropriations of a certain amount, in order to be between that 5% to 17% fund balance level as the DRA recommends, this is how much you need to have based on the size of your budgets. So if you look at the total all components of $74,539,000, that is the sum total of all appropriations for the town. Town side, school side, statewide education tax, and county. So that's what we therefore, that's our guidepost for deciding how much fund balance to use. In the middle section of the worksheet is where I sort of lay out a few different scenarios on how much fund balance to use for you all to consider, keeping in mind that we want to stay between that 5% and 17% that is recommended. So I've laid out a $600,000 use, a $650,000 use, and a $700,000 use. And this is all to bring down the tax rate to a level that we can, you know, feel good about. We ended 2024 with an assigned fund balance of $5.993 million, which was up about $750,000 from the year before. So our fund balance increased year over year. We did have fund balance that we voted to buy items in the March election. And then at the bottom line, if we were to apply, say, $600,000 of fund balance, we'd have a fund balance that represented 6.83% of our total appropriations of the $74 million up above. And that's within the DRA guidelines. So and again, if I laid out the 600, the 650, and the 700,000, and it ranges from, you know, 6.8 to, down to a 6.7% number. And then in the bottom, I show if we were to apply one of these three scenarios to the tax rate, what our tax rate would end up being at the local level. So for instance, if we use $600,000 to smooth fund balance, we'd end up with a local tax rate of $4.49, which would be 29 cents higher than the year before. $4.48 would be at 650,000. And just to give you some reference, if we use 650,000, it's 28 cents over last year's tax rate, and it would represent about $140 for a house with a value of $500,000 at the local level. That's our local rate. I am recommending, after talking with interim town manager Roy, and chewing on it a little bit myself, that we go middle of the road, 650,000. I think 28 cents over last year, $140 in a $500,000 house isn't, it is what it is. It keeps us, it keeps us somewhat in control of the rate. And it also doesn't spend too much of our fund balance, because as you know, we're dealing with a budget, general fund budget that is now less than 12% increase, but that's still a very large number. And that tax rate will get set next year at the same time. And that's going to have an impact where we may want to think about applying even more fund balance. And I want to make sure we've got that fund balance available to us.
I think that's a good thought process.
So.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If you're.
Yeah, I'm sort of done. 650 is what I was going to recommend, but it's really, you know.
I want to back up to the second set of numbers here, the appropriations general. So the recommendation is to have undesignated fund balance that is a certain percentage of the total of all components.
That is correct, yes.
But why isn't it just the town budget? Or are we holding money for all these entities?
That is right. That is right.
I'm working, trying to kind of work my mind through that.
Remember that our fund balance not only is our equity position, but to some extent it's our cash position, too, right? So we need that for flexibility. We need to pay the schools, we need to pay the county at the end of the year.
Right.
Yes.
So we have an obligation to pass the tax dollars through
Correct.
to the schools, to the statewide education tax fund, and to the county. But the undesignated fund balance is actually just town operations, correct?
Well, the 5.8 represents our equity position in all of these components. Yes, it is our money, but we are, we are holding school money until, so each month we pay them
Yeah.
a certain portion.
Yeah.
So I need.
You understand the kind of drive of my question, right? Why aren't we just using the annual budget of the town as opposed to?
Like I say, we're, like I say, we're holding school cash.
And it's for cash flow reasons.
Well, that's, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I think I understand.
And as a piece of it is, holding it for cash flow purposes.
Yep. Well, that is kind of why you have that undesignated fund balance, right? So that you don't end up in a cash flow jam.
Partially, but it also allows us to use it to put things on the warrant that are paid more by fund balance as well.
Yep. I think I understand what you're saying. I may follow up offline to get clearer on this.
Sure.
But thank you. I appreciate you entertaining that question.
Go ahead.
Do we have an average that we have been doing for the past years?
How much we've been using?
Yeah. Percentage even?
It's range, so I think we, maybe two years ago, we used 300,000. We went, used up to 900 of a million a couple of years ago as well. So it has ceased.
So many variables in there that factor it in, yeah. I try so hard to understand myself and help to educate the public on how the budget works, that it's, the complications of it. But yeah, thank you.
I think you would like it to be somewhat stable. We are, we are trying to be stable with the number of warrant articles that we fund through fund balance. So you'll see that number somewhere between 300 and $500,000 every year. But tax, but setting the tax rate and smoothing the tax rate is a function of where we see the tax rate going year over year. I know Mr. Dean and I, he was, like I say, upwards of a million a year, and as low as 300.
Yeah, quite a range, but thank you.
And I'm happy to discuss anytime you want to come across the street and talk some more.
But I mean, I'm comfortable with your recommendation.
A couple other documents. One importantly is, on the next page is a projection of our general fund revenues year over year. So these are all of the revenues that the town takes in that aren't tax revenue, and where we project them to be for 2025. And you'll see the projection for '25 is $8.7 million, which is about $200,000 less than the prior year. These are important because they also, you know, help us mitigate how much of fund balance we have to use and how much we have to ask for voters from taxation. Three or four notable items, land use change tax, we're predicting is going to go down around $365,000 from the prior year. That's just a matter of what projects are coming through the door and what's being taken out of current use from one year to our next. We had two significant projects in '24, and we just have one in '25. So the revenue is decreasing there. Building permits, we've had a fantastic year, very active in 2025, and we anticipate around $600,000, which is an increase of $250,000 over the prior year. Investment interest is starting to decline a little bit. We estimate about $100,000 reduction from 2024, just based on interest rates, starting to decline that we've seen this year. And then finally, we have, in past years, used bond proceeds to offset debt service on our existing debt, and those funds are drying up as we, you know, sunset projects and bring that money in to offset debt. So just about a $72,000 decrease from the prior year there. And then the last page is simply a summary of the warrant articles and appropriations from March of 2025. The appropriate, and then we have an appropriations breakdown by funding source, and then the funding source below to show, to show you where projects and appropriations are being funded from.
Did you have a question?
I do. Do we have an update, or could we at some point get an update on any outstanding grants that we still had monies coming in? We had some updates for a while, and I don't believe there were many left, but it would be good to know.
Yeah, and it's probably the reason I haven't given you an update is because it has sort of settled down and whatever. There was a lot of activity, and then things sort of fell off. But I will give you an update
Yeah, just.
at the next meeting.
Talk to Mr. Chair and whenever. I just didn't know if we had, if there was any clawback issues on anything we have left out there.
Can we pull that together for the next one?
Oh, sure. Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So you're looking tonight, Mr. Stevens, for a motion?
I am. And I guess I didn't give you a motion, but
Nope, no, no, no.
I would recommend and like to see us use $650,000 in tax rate setting, in fund balance for tax rate setting purposes for the 2025 tax rate.
25?
Correct.
So moved? Are you okay with it?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll second. So what is the motion?
Motion is to use $650,000 of fund balance in setting the tax rate for 2025.
I thought Cory had already said it, I'm sorry.
No, that's, you got that, as long as you got that.
Okay.
And you're moving it?
I moved it, yeah.
I'm second.
You're seconding it. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 3-0. I just wanted to make sure Joanna got it.
Could I say one more?
Of course.
Thank you for all your work on this, Cory.
Oh, you're welcome.
Great job. Great presentation.
I'll circle back with you with a little more eloquent explanation of our.
Well, and I need to ask the question in a more eloquent way.
Yeah.
No, I got it.
And I appreciate, I really do appreciate how you pulled everything together, and you make it really simple to follow. It's a very complicated issue, and you do help to simplify it, which we all need at times, so.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Dean spent a lot of time with me. A lot of these are things that he took me through when I was first starting. So a lot of these are, you know, templates that I've refined a little bit, but have built on what the good folks.
Well, your refining is much appreciated.
And I have to say, he ran this through with me last week, and it's much cooler when you have it up on a big screen and you can actually see the numbers.
I'm sure.
All right, thank you, Cory.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, you've got one timber tax.
I have one timber tax. So I move for map 91, lot 42, in the amount of $2,647.50 for the tax year 2025.
And I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 3-0. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Stevens.
Okay. So I have a memo in the packet to you this evening regarding the construction management contract for the new police station, fire substation. As you know, we are working hand in hand with Ekman Construction Incorporated, who will be our, who are our contract manager. And we're in the process of, now that we're getting close to 100% design drawings, we are close to starting, you know, construction and are putting together their construction management contract. At the same time, we need to get site work going on this project, given the time of year, given scheduling of the site work with contractors. But we're not ready to say that the contract, the large contract, is really ready to go just yet. We're working with legal. Melissa and I are still kind of going back and forth, talking with Primex. So we wanted to get it on for this evening, but I just, we were not comfortable doing that. So I spoke with Ekman and just said, you know, can we do something to get you guys going without necessarily having the contract? And what we agreed to was to bring to you all, basically a notice to proceed letter, letting Ekman move forward on a limited basis with a limited scope, that being site work, to basically get the wheels in motion. It's going to take them about four weeks between the time, if you approve this, between now and when they can actually get someone scratching the ground and pulling up the boulders out there. So we need to get going. We made this a limited sort of scope. Legal agreed with that. Melissa and I were comfortable with it, and Ekman is also comfortable with it. So there's a letter. What I'm looking for is a motion from the board allowing Ekman to move forward with site work on the project, and then for the Chair of the Board to execute the letter that's in your packet that will send to Ekman, and they will, from there, proceed with mobilizing site work.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
And Cory talked with me on Friday about this, and I was comfortable, as long as the board was.
Was this in the packet online, or will it be added?
No, it was, it was added this morning, yes. It is a separate item in the packet.
So it is available for the public online?
Correct.
That's correct, yep.
Awesome.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion allowing Ekman Construction Company, Inc. to move forward with site walk on the new police station, fire substation project, and to authorize the Select Board Chair to execute the enclosed letter for delivery to Ekman Construction Company, Inc. on Tuesday, October 28, 2025.
So moved.
And I'll second.
So motion and a second. So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post? Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you very much.
So interim Town Manager Melissa Roy is at the International City County Management Association, otherwise known as ICMA. Annually, our Town Manager goes to that conference, but even though she's there, she has been working through the weekend, and Mr. Stevens and I can attest to that, and was working even today during breaks and put together a Town Manager's Report that Mr. Stevens is going to read on her behalf.
Awesome. I know for a fact this, this list is, is short, because I know she's working on a ton more than just this, but these are the highlights. So over the last couple of weeks, she has welcomed in our new HR Director, Kelly Correa. She came in last Monday, so she's been spending time introducing her around town and working with HR on a transition plan to get Melissa out of HR and Kelly taking over the department. She's attended various meetings for the police fire substation project regarding both the construction contracts and budget review. She's been working with Park and Recs to finalize Ten Hampton Road project, and they're expecting a grand opening at the beginning of, towards the middle of November, once the team has moved in. Park and Recs will be coming to the board with a donation request from Riverwoods, who is renovating one of their buildings and donating furniture to Ten Hampton and some other locations around town possibly. So that's good news. She attended all BRC Subcommittee meetings with staff and department heads, as well as attending the all-day General Government BRC meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the Police Fire Budget Committee last, meeting last Wednesday night. She attended the tax exempt and credit meeting, the last one they had as well. She runs our weekly Ops meeting on Wednesdays for all departments. She attended a meeting with myself and Selectman, Chairman of the Board, and library heads regarding their FY '26 budget a week or so ago. She's been working with me to continue to look at the budget for potential reductions of any kind, and we'll continue to update you as we find those, those items that we might want to reconsider. She attended a meeting with me and DRA, as I alluded to, to work through our tax rate setting last week. She went to the Phoenix Tailings ground, grand opening last week as well, attends various personnel matters as they come up, and she wanted to note that West, there's a West Side Drive Public Information Meeting. The Public Information Meeting is scheduled for October 30, 2025, at 6:00 PM, and will be held at the Exeter Public Library for Chestnut Street here in Exeter. And that is her report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Stevens?
Uh-uh.
Perfect, no. And Melissa, if you're watching, thank you. Some tells me she is.
Yes, she was on the plane Friday catching up and sending emails.
Thank you, Cory, for filling in tonight.
You're welcome.
Select Board Committee reports, we'll start with you, please.
Okay, so I had a hectic work week last week, so I didn't get to attend the meetings that I normally do, but I did watch them. Rec Advisory Board was October 22. There was an update on Ten Hampton Road, and they talked about moving in in November, as Mr. Stevens said. They updated on the ADA changing tables, which is, is great. The paving on the parking lot and the, there's the connector path so that people can park in the bigger parking lot and walk over to Ten Hampton Road. I believe that's ready. Gilman Park is getting some work done on the infield and grading, grading drainage issues, and this work going forward on the Dan Healy Pool. The hospital grant that we awarded again, 38, $30,000, they're going to use that as the same as they did last year. They talked about the attendance at the senior lunches, which is about 30 to 50 on average, and they're going to keep those at the Town Hall. They had one at Townhouse Commons, I believe, this summer, and some of the participants were a little uncomfortable with the terrain, they, they've, being outside when you're older and stuff, so they're going to stick to the Town Hall for now. And then they're going to be having a meeting about, about budget in January. And they're also suggesting changing their meetings from monthly to quarterly. So that would be coming up. There was some discussion about this budget this year, and some of the cuts that have been discussed. So we'll see where that goes. Then Planning Board was Thursday night, the 23rd. The application for 25-3, which is the Kaley Associates on 97 Portsmouth Ave, the applicants agreed to get to another extension, so that's going to be coming up on November 6. The Planning Board meetings in November are a week earlier than normal because of Thanksgiving. So we're usually the second and fourth, we're the first and third in November. We already know that they voted to give the consideration for the PEA. And then there was just some general things, some proposed zoning changes were discussed. One was new law in New Hampshire now on ADA. We're okay because we were already doing what the new law says, but the language needs to be updated. Parking space language needs to be updated. There were a few others. Oh, Doug Eastman is suggesting or recommending permitted use in a few of our C2, C3, and I didn't note the other one, to make it a special exception for kennels. He's been having some issues in town with people having kennels and the neighbors not appreciating it, but he's being invited to the Planning Board to talk about that. Also, a, another proposed change to site plan regs, a requirement of the post office has happened, so they're looking, it's not clear yet on exactly what type of development, but male, male, not male, male kiosks, they don't want to be driving into these new developments. Again, more to come. And Marty Kennedy will get a letter soon. We haven't had three members representing us at Rockingham Planning Commission, so they talked about that and kind of voted for Marty Kennedy to take that spot on the Planning Board. And then the Housing Advisory, I left my notes at home, and that's the one meeting I did get to. So we basically just had a legislative update. There's something coming from Melissa, and she sent it out on Friday, but Darren had come that morning and went and got a copy. So that's some news coming up, but I'll wait until Melissa, like, puts it in our packet and did the questions and answers on that. And we're inviting Tony, I cannot say his last name right, Tex Tiara, what is it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's, um, House, Exeter Housing Authority. Sorry, Tony, Tex area, something. He's going to come talk to us about possible future projects for some more housing, available housing for elderly, maybe Section 8, whatever. See if we can come up with some brainstorming ideas again. That's my report.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Selectman Chair.
Just one item in my report. I did participate with members of the Sustainability Advisory Committee on a Styrofoam collection on Saturday, the 25th of October, from 9:00 to 11:00. We had a very successful collection effort. Again, we had great support from DPW, Wayne was there again, and we appreciate his help. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. Let's see, I had Swayze Park Trustee meeting, and they met briefly and just went through their usual placeholders, although they will be meeting an hour earlier in November to go through the bids, which they do on an annual basis for the maintenance of the park. And on the 17th, I joined Selectwoman Belanger for part of the BRC all day. She stayed for the whole thing. I had to leave, unfortunately, probably three quarters of the way through.
You were there for most of it.
Want to thank staff in the BRC for what I saw was good meeting. On Monday, the 20th, along with Darius Thompson, representing the Swayze Park Trustees, every third Monday of the month is the Coastal Resiliency Committee, and we're about ready to hold our first public meeting for the public to hear steps forward. We've, we're lobbying for the Town Hall to be the venue, and unfortunately, because of the holidays and the Town Hall being booked, our preferred dates were taken, so we're working with Steve Cronin to find some alternate dates, but it will be in that late November, early December, and once we get that, I will publicize that here. On the 23rd, the Pairpoint Park Committee could not meet because of the lack of a quorum, and I joined interim Town Manager Melissa Roy at the Phoenix Tailings opening. We were there for about an hour or so, and that was fun. And I don't remember the date, but you already talked about the library meeting, and that was a very enlightening meeting with the new library director, as well as the Chair of the Trustees to go over budget, and I think it was productive and we made some steps forward, so.
Good.
Looking forward to a good collaboration with that group, and I think that's it for me.
BRC, we watched it.
BRC, watched the police and fire. I had a.
Yeah.
Personal conflict and was unable to be there, but it was a relatively short meeting. I got home and put it on to watch the tail end, and it was already over.
It was. I think we, we, we got, we dispensed with the operating budgets fairly quickly. I think then it sort of, the conversation turned to just, you know, the, the plateau and the challenge of, of hiring, retaining, and, you know, what we're up against or what they're up against, like many of our conversations, so, yeah, it lasted for a while, based on, you know, that, that conversation.
Yeah, I, if it's okay for me to add, that our fire chief, I was really happy to hear him thank Melissa and you for, for the approach to this year's budget, and I know you're all worked, have been working for months. Before this evening comes out, you guys put a lot of work in, and you're doing everything you can to present a tight budget. And I think as far as I can tell so far from the BRC, the comments, they, they've seen it and commented on it, but our fire chief particularly commented on the guidance and the conversation, the collaboration, so thank you for that.
Yeah, the, both, both departments have been really good to work with this year, and I feel like we're speaking the same language when we get together for these pre-meetings now and working through what their needs are and the change in their needs year over year, and their standing why, and what that translates into for time and dollars, really. So particularly with police, we've been doing it for a few years now, now just in for the last couple.
Yeah.
Thank you for saying that, and I, I second that. I also want to, now that you've made me think, if folks haven't watched that meeting, go back to when our Police Chief Poole and Deputy Chief McCain answered a question by one of the members of the BRC about challenges within the police department and staffing.
Yeah.
And I was, between Chief Poole and Deputy Chief McCain collaborating on giving a very thorough answer, it, it just blew my mind as to how thoughtful and accurate their answer was, and it was very real.
It was, it was.
I just, it, it really.
It was eye-opening.
Because we, we hear it all the time, but for the BRC to hear that, and hopefully folks at home will watch that, it's just, there isn't just one challenge, there's, there are so many challenges. And, you know, Chief Poole alluded to, what we always say, it's not exclusive to Exeter. But I just thought the way he answered that question was just, I hope people watch that.
I do, too.
Okay, correspondence, we have an rebuttal notice in the Town Stratum for a Planning Board meeting on November 5, and this is regarding the design plan in Stony Brook. And I'm going to follow up when interim Town Manager Roy comes back to see if anyone is going to be going to this, representing Exeter. And we have, let's see, a memo from the Rockingham Planning Commission regarding the Hampton Beach Casino. An email from a resident expressing their opposition to the budget so far, and I believe my response is included in here. And the last piece of correspondence, I think we need to do a little homework on this. This was about leaf blowers. And I know that through my various contacts on social media across the country, it's a big issue for some folks, and whether it be the noise or the pollution. This was a very well-written email with some good research, but there's a lot here. I know regarding the noise, you know, we do have a noise ordinance in the town. It's very difficult to enforce when I talk to the chief in terms of, like, measuring. I don't think a leaf blower is making the type of noise that would violate our ordinance.
The desmos, right.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's okay.
I was just checking on that work, but.
It's planning board life.
So I think I'll work with Melissa to kind of dig into this a little bit, but certainly anything like this would require a vote at Town Meeting.
Yeah, and I think their concern was the gas part of it. If I'm not mistaken, I don't want to speak for anyone, but that was what.
There's a, yeah.
I took from that.
Yeah.
But yeah, our, our noise ordinance is kind of late at night, too, so.
Yeah. You know, and there's also, you know, we have a lot of local businesses that are landscapers to consider that as well, so there's.
Right, it's a lot to look at.
There's a lot here.
Yeah.
So on the board calendar, I apologize to the board, I kept saying November 11, it's November 10th, that Monday. For some reason, I had it November 11.
No, wait a minute.
November 11th is actually the holiday.
It's because of the holiday.
Yeah. So November 10th, November 24th, December 8th, and December 22nd, and due to a scheduling conflict, Selectwoman Gilman will not be here November 10th, so we expect it'll just be the four of us. So with that, any other business before the board this evening?
No.
I hope this is appropriate, but I'm going to ask anybody. Selectwoman Gilman's mom passed away this morning, Mary Dupre, and I was wondering if we could have a moment of silence.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, unfortunately, Selectwoman Gilman called me this morning to say that her mother had passed early this morning.
Longtime resident.
Longtime resident, lot of children, Potomil Road.
With that, let's, let's have a moment of silence and remember. And Julie, if you're watching, certainly you have our condolences and sympathies, and may your mom's memory be eternal. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post? It's 3-0, we stand adjourned. Good evening, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.